... through the play of the United States of America. And for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I would ask that all board members be respectful to each other and that all visitors be respectful to board members and anybody speaking. Okay? Everything about this meeting is back at the door or you can log on to rrps.org and attain the information regarding this meeting. At this time, I will do roll call. Director Dahl?
Here.
Director Addy's here. Director Laeger?
Here.
Director Riordan?
Present.
Let the record reflect that Director Yohan, Director Wespe, and Director Shorkin are not here. Okay. Item two, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Director Riordan.
Oh, with Willie.
Oh, yes.
With Willie being 01 under reports. I'm sorry.
I've been asked by Mr. Speltz to be moved to reports 5.01, right before the Treasury Report. Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Recognition of visitor input. We have Terry Heratki who wants to speak.
Some flyers if you wanna, um, wanna take one and pass it on.
I'll be the official.
Yeah, there's like four in there.
I'm the official timekeeper too.
Okay, can you wait till I get up to the podium?
Yeah, yeah.
Run, run!
I will wait till you start talking.
Okay. All right. Okay, tonight I would like to speak to you all because we may have the actually strategy plan that's being considered for adoption. It's the assumption that our underachievement academically has been a result of inequities in the system that have put up barriers of race, income, and systemic bias for certain people that have prevented children from succeeding. But the data that I handed out there that is from 2011 to 2019, it tells a different story. The left column shows the percentage of proficiency in reading for third graders and the bar on the bottom is the percentage of children at poverty level which is determined if they filed for a free lunch program, which typically includes minors or minorities. So as you go through the charts, you guys don't have, and I'm sorry my printer's terrible, but it shows that academically, from 2011 to 2019, we're going down, 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 but the poverty level basically stays the same between 4% and 50%. So that doesn't really drive that if you're poor or a minority that academically you can't do well. So what changed through the years to drop these numbers? Did we become racist and then all of a sudden after COVID, you know, those disparities are getting greater? Well, I propose that the social and emotional learning programs that came in for a long time, but they've transformed education away from academics. The solution that's offered in the plan is mainly focused on school culture as a solution. Social, emotional learning, DEI. And instead of blaming and covering up our failures to teach properly on race and social justice, which will actually further our downward spiral academically, we need to focus on using our money to hire more good teachers at the lower levels that are experienced in teaching and reading. And rather than fund social, emotional programs and psychological teacher trainings like Orange Frog and equity directors, let's take our money and let's focus on the academics. Until you can give studies with data that show DEI works to bring kids up academically, I think we should postpone implementing this experiment on our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Next, no, there was just only one person. One person, just.
Okay.
Okay, item four, consent agenda. Can you get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make that motion.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports 5.01. Willie, come speak.
This is, this is the last time he's gonna be able to step in front of everybody 'cause he does this all the time.
No, he doesn't. Oh, but, but.
Did he have permission to speak? I don't remember him asking.
It's not, and he, he does not know the circumstances in which you were moved to the position that you sat.
Yeah.
Just wait till you hear what they are. No, thank you very much. I really do appreciate it. So in the fundraising world and school-to-work engagement, things are still absolutely fantastic and going at 1,000 miles an hour, I just wanna make sure you know that. That's important to start and I'll get. The Bezek family has completed their wonderful family donation for naming the Career Center, the Bezek Career Center. We thank them and appreciate them for this beautiful donation. So thank you to the Bezek family. That's gonna be great. It was really fun working with them too. The Kamatsu Mining Corporation Foundation has just made a $15,000 donation. Thank you to Jim Tooney of Kamatsu in Virginia for their support of our CTE courses. Jim and Kamatsu are very interested and supportive of our academy model and student preparation to immediately impact the local workforce. So thank you Kamatsu Mining Corporation Foundation. Howard Segal has made a recent donation. Actually, I was just playing hockey with him over the weekend in an old man hockey tournament and was telling him about all the wonderful things and he wanted to make sure he could make a donation. So thank you, Mr. Segal, for that wonderful donation. Now, I wanna go back a couple weeks if that's okay. I wasn't able to be here last board meeting and I was lucky enough to be on the admin team and be a part of an incredible group effort by all of us involved to get the new gym opened for the US Steel Gymnasium opened for basketball games, that double basketball game. So rewind your brain to there a little bit. But, and if some of these people were already thanked, it's nothing wrong with thanking them twice, but a very special thank you to Brandon and Brady Sepala at Pole Hockey Lumber for stepping up to support the basketball games at the new campus. Brandon and his son Brady helped us get access to rugs to keep people safe and protect the Activity Center Gymnasium flooring, the Activity Center and the Gymnasium flooring by connecting us with their rug company, not, not only connecting us, but paying for the rental of the rugs during these games at Pole Hockey. And on top of that, they both helped us put the rugs out, plan where they should go, and came after and picked them up. When we were a few rugs short, Brandon called Kerry Waschke from Waschke Family Auto Plaza for more rugs. So we wanna thank Kerry for hustling and hurrying and bringing her rugs up to us on such short notice, coming to get them after. Thank you, Brandon, Brady, and Kerry. This was truly a community effort to get that off. At the same time, we have to recognize Wendy Garman, Jeff Ramponi, and Alan Weirma, the custodians who were absolutely going 1,000 miles an hour to get that gym and Activity Center open that night. They knocked it out of the park as they prepared the entire Activity Center and Gymnasium for the games. They shined that place up like a beautiful diamond and cleaned it up after, back to that diamond shine. Mike Hogan, his staff, were fantastic in preparation. And let us not forget the ton of hours that Bill Bryson put in on the technology side of that night. He was a rock star in all of the intricate details of technology that many of us don't even realize is needed. Plus, the parking lot folks who braved the cold weather to guide everybody in those frigid temps all night, well done, and all of the admin team members who were there to help in so many capacities. It was important to prove all that. Maybe you already did. Again, I apologize for the repeat, but watching that, I point back there because that's where we meet, and watching that team mobilize to get that done was just awesome. And then to kinda watch that night was great. So I wanted to share that with you. Thank you for that opportunity. Now, back to the school-to-work part of my job, which is bringing people in to talk to our students with the academy model, to talk about careers and career exploration. And it's also now getting our kids out there, which is even early. We probably weren't, you know, really looking to do this until next year when the academies are up and running in the new building. But we've got such, so many good people in the communities, in our communities, that are willing to take kids right now. And we've got Jill Clennan's class for public speaking course for the juniors and seniors who have to pick a career. We talked about this last year and then they get, go out in job shadow and I'm tasked with finding those job shadows. Sent a kid out today and he sent me this email. Listen to this. This sums up what we're trying to do and this is awesome. Dear Mr. Speltz, thank you so much for the opportunity to join the amazing team at the courthouse today. This is one of our students who had their job shadow. I aspire to be as kind and knowledgeable as Judge Anderson and Judge Peterson. They were truly amazing people that I'm grateful that I could meet. Mrs. Cope was exactly what I hoped to be if I maintained my path towards law. She was so smart, I couldn't even comprehend some topics. She just talked right through. I learned so many interesting things about law and life in general. Finally, thank you for allowing me and Wade this opportunity. I truly appreciate all the work that you put into not only my job shadow, but my entire class. I know that you take this seriously and I hope you will continue this for future years at Rock Ridge, yours gratefully, Joshua Johnson. That is what we're trying to do. This kid was completely impacted today. If it was yesterday, no, it has to be today. It, it, just amazing. That's exactly what we want with this Career Academy stuff when the kids are out there looking for other things.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Willie.
Thanks, Willie. Next, 5.1, the Treasury's report. Do we?
Do I, I don't have to?
How are we gonna do that?
Usually what we've done in the past, Nicole, is you just read off what the balances are.
Okay.
That's, that's all that was really done in the past.
We have that sheet in here.
Okay.
She's looking at it.
Yeah, all right.
You want me to read? Okay.
Yeah, so like right here you could say.
Okay.
As of today, or as of February 28th, the Miners National Bank had this amount. France Bank had that amount. And you just read it and construction bonds and basically what you're saying.
Yep. Okay, as of February 28th, 2023, checking savings accounts, Miners National Bank France Bank has $3,914,400. First National Bank of Gilbert has $1,616,170. Minnesota Trust/PMA Securities has $606,988. Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Funds has $318,857. That totals $10,970,355. Under the Construction Bonds Funds, Eller's Investment Partners has a balance of OPEB Funds, Minnesota Trust/PMA Securities, the balance is $8,933,251.
And I, and you would say, you would say that you would ask the board to accept the Treasury Report as presented.
I would ask the board to approve the Treasury Report as stated.
I'll move, just support that.
Second.
No, she moved it.
I mean, she moved it. I'll second. I'll second. Thanks.
It's okay.
Good job, Nicole. You did great.
Okay. All those in favor of, or all those in favor of approving the Treasury Report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 5.2, Indigenous Education Update. Speaker Emily Jankala.
Bonjour.
Bonjour.
So I'm Emily Jankala. I'm the Indigenous Education Director at Rock Ridge. And every year we have an annual compliance vote for our parent committee. So this is a vote that our parent committee, we vote on different focus areas, which I'll talk about in a second, and our parent committee votes if we are concurrents or non-concurrents. If our, if they feel our district and our program are doing their job well or if they think we need some work. And our parent committee did vote yes that we are concurrent with every focus area. So I'm basically just here to present that to you and that we voted yes. Our focus areas for this grant from the, it's the American Indian Aid Application Grant from the Minnesota Department of Education. And our focus areas are support post-secondary preparation, support academic achievement for American Indian students, make curriculum relevant to the needs and interests of cultural heritage of American Indian pupils, provide positive reinforcement of the self-image of Native Americans, and develop intercultural awareness among pupils, parents, and staff. So those are our focus areas and we voted, the parent committee voted yes on all of those that we are concurrent. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about our program and where we're hitting all these areas. So like for post-secondary preparation, we do FAFSA nights, we do college applications with the kids. We have people coming in from Boyesfort and the Minnesota Scholarship, Indian Scholarship, come in and do a presentation and help the kids fill that out. So we do, and we usually do two to three college visits a year. We have two more planned this spring. We already did one. We do tutoring every day. So kids are assigned to our room for like a study hall so they can get extra support and tutoring. And then kids also drop, drop in when they can to work on projects or take tests or things like that. So we do daily and weekly grade checks for all of our students and keep them on task and keeping communication with teachers. We meet with teachers and teachers reach out to us all the time to get, for the curriculum part, to get guest speakers or just more information, different books, need to come in and talk about different things in their curriculum as it goes with their curriculum. So we do that kind of thing. All of the fun stuff we've done, we marched in the homecoming parade and we had students fancy shawl dance and jingle dress dance. And I think that's super important for our kids to just like take pride in their heritage and get to show that to, you know, their peers and then their peers can get interested in that too. And I think that just makes it more comfortable for everybody to just learn about each other. We do lots of, we did Indigenous Games not that long ago and that was for all Rock Ridge ninth and 10th graders. So that was really fun. We had snow snakes, one legged high kick, stick pull, snow shoe races, boot hockey, lacrosse, double ball, just like a bunch of different Indigenous Games. And it was really, really fun to see all the kids get to participate in that. And hopefully next year we can make it even bigger with more kids being able to participate with the whole, have things in the football field and whatnot too. So we're excited about that. We work a lot with the 1854 Treaty Authority. They took us dog sledding and spearing. We've done knocking sticks and things like that with them. The kids learn beadwork and different sewing things. And we're gonna do our maple sugar, like Sugar Bush days too, now that it's starting to get warmer. And so the kids usually help with presentations in different classrooms and then they get to go outside and we're hopefully gonna do a little like mini boil-down lesson and then they get to try real syrup versus Miss Butterworth's. So they usually like that kinda stuff too. So we do a lot of different cultural things and just enforcing that positive leadership role for our students to just feel like they're a part of things. We've had our students involved in this athletic diversity training council and they went down to the cities for that. And one of our, one of my students fancied shawl dance in front of that whole place just to like show part of her heritage, which I thought was amazing showing her like personal. She was like very positive and like wanted to share that with everyone and I think that's a huge part of providing that positive reinforcement for self-image of Native American kids. And I think that our staff here does so well with making sure that the curriculum is relevant and not harmful to Native students. And I think that we hired two new people this year, so I'm not the only one doing everything anymore. So lots of, lots has been off my plate, which has been super helpful. And we have a really great team now and I'm really looking forward to where our program grows. Does anyone have any questions about our program?
So you said you guys had Indigenous Games for, was it ninth through 12, you said?
It was ninth, ninth grade and 10th grade.
Okay.
We wanted it ninth through 12, but it was just so many kids and not enough teachers and not enough rooms. So we had to just, next year hopefully we'll do ninth through 12th grade and then maybe even a junior high thing too. So hopefully, and it'll be easier once we're all in one building.
Cause you're at Virginia High School right now. Is that correct? And so do the Eplith students come over or how does that?
No, I am gonna be there every Wednesday. They don't have like a room there. And they, we just took Eplith on. Eplith was part of the 2142 school district with Indian Ed until we like consolidated. So now we have the Eplith High School and all the elementaries too now. So, and Maria Potter's aide is our elementary advisor. So she's going to all of the elementary schools. And then I, we just hired Michaela Gert and she's at the high school now. So now I'm free to like kinda bump around and support wherever I'm needed. So now I get to spend a lot more time in Eplith High School too.
Do you know approximately how many students you guys provide services for?
About 187. I'm not sure on that, but it's close. I just, I don't have it on me right now. K, uh, K through 12. So it actually averages, if you look per grade, it averages from eight to 15 students per class.
Okay.
Any more questions for?
Does this need to be?
No, it's just an update.
Or no?
No.
I need the signatures for the chairperson and Noel.
Okay. Yeah.
You have the paper?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
And our parent committee already signed those.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Up next is.
Angie Williams.
Angie, 5.3.
Good evening. How was everybody?
Good.
Good.
Good. Nice to be back here again. The last time I was here, I talked about the end of the first trimester and how progress, progress reports went home last Friday. And right back, we're the same message, but we're at the end of the second trimester now and progress reports went home last Friday. So I'm here at the end of every trimester and I think I am here at the end of the third trimester too for one more time. So just wanna let everybody know that the first two trimesters went well and we're looking forward to the third one. I wanna talk a little bit about our February I Love to Read Month and I wanna give a huge shout out to Bridja Lacassier. She's our media specialist aide, but she also took on the role of being our coordinator for I Love to Read Month. And she put a tremendous amount of time and effort into organizing the activities and I just can't thank her enough for the job that she did. She organized, February 1st is actually the World Read Loud Day. And so she organized several of our elementary teachers and their students. They zoomed and read in English to English language learners at a preschool and an elementary school south of the border in Mexico. So that was kind of a neat experience to see kids in a different country and then our students actually were reading to them in English to help them learn the English language. So that was a really cool thing that she did. She also organized 29 community members to come in and to read to our students. She had judges there from the judicial system. She had healthcare professionals, emergency service members, all to talk about their role in our neighborhoods and then how they make lives better for everybody in our community. Our second through sixth graders, they earned more than 2,000 AR points. And our youngest elementary readers, they read more than 3,740 books. So along with that, she had solicited from the local area prizes. So she got T-shirts for them and certificates to play mini golf, certificates to go to bowling, pizza parties. She has ice cream sundae parties. And every participant received a personal mini pizza kit to take home and make their own pizza. So just going out and getting all of those donations was tremendous. The grand finale, the top reader in each class was able to throw a pie in our student support person Christine Miller's face. And we have student, I never thought that they would be able to hit her in the face because she was making him stand, you know, a foot at least.
Great idea.
They threw, and I'm not kidding you, they hit her face. It was amazing. I didn't think that they would. But the venue for this, we didn't do it in the gym. We did it in our heart space. So we had the cafeteria tables cleared and we had the kids sitting on the floor with our fifth and sixth graders up on that balcony. And so we had the big screen come down behind us. And then our tech person, Bob, he took an iPad and he was recording the kids so that then they would see themselves up on the screen and record like the throwing of the pie in the face and, and recording everything. And when those little kiddos saw themselves up on that big screen, they were just cheering and clapping. I mean, it was just, I couldn't believe how loud those kids were. It was a really neat experience. And then Bridget, she just did a wonderful job engaging all of our students in, in the whole festivities. So it was a huge thank you to Bridget. She did an awesome job. And she did an awesome job doing the MCs. So we even asked her she would do our awards program at the end of the year 'cause she is just a natural at it. Really got the kids engaged. So. So that was neat. The last thing I wanna talk about, I'm gonna have Luke here put on the screen. And while he's doing that, what you're gonna be seeing, I'm showcasing my Laurentian News at 9 broadcast. So ever since I knew that we have, ever, ever since I knew that we have this makerspace and this green space, it's like, okay, we've gotta utilize that. So I went to Stace Landwerth, who is the advisor for our ambassadors, our sixth grade student council basically, and I asked him to work with them on putting together a newscast that we could broadcast every day to our student body. And instead of reading the announcements over the PA and doing the Pledge of Allegiance over the PA, now we have these sixth grade ambassadors using their recess time to record themselves with iPads and making a YouTube video that then the teachers the next day play the announcements like at nine o'clock or whenever they, it fits for them during the day. So this is a showcase of our sixth graders ambassadors doing a broadcast.
Good morning, Wolverines. Today is Monday, the 13th.
Today's weather is a high of 26. Rock Ridge Schools would like to take a moment to recognize the 12 U B1 girls hockey team to be the freshman of going to state. These girls have worked so hard all year. They have had 34 wins, two losses and four ties. They went to five tournaments and brought home five first place trophies. They're heading to their first state tournament in Eden, playing at 6:00 PM on Friday in Fairbowl. If you haven't seen any of these girls, please congratulate them on their success.
From the Ebleth High School, team captain Kate Morley, Kira Irwin, Preston Lees Mackey, Peyton Wonnich, Aliyah Putkinen, Riley Haru and Erin Travlin.
From Virginia High School, Captain Maddie Bartovich. From Mount Niren High School, Captain Sarah Mo. From the Laurentian Elementary, Stella Kokowski and Ava Ben. From the North Star Elementary, Abby Sterla and Zoe Mattson.
Good luck at state!
Today's lunch is pepperoni pizza.
This joke is from Lizzie from fourth grade. Why does a golfer bring your best pants?
Uh, no, in case he got a hole in it!
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is super cool.
Have a good day Wolverines out!
Very nice, very nice.
Oh, very impressed with that and they get better every single day. For the joke of the day, they actually are trying to get the kids involved and said, if you have a joke that you would like to have us say, please email us at this email address. And so then kids are submitting jokes of the day. And yeah, so it's been working out really a wonderful, so I'm proud of our ambassadors at Laurentian Elementary.
That's very cool.
Super cool.
Very good.
And I saw, I saw a video, there was a video of the ending of the I Love to Read Month. I think it was on Rock Ridge Facebook page. That was, that was pretty cool. It looked like they enjoyed it.
I just couldn't believe all the noise and they were just having a blast for that grand finale. Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
And when I, when I was at the school on Friday, I, you mentioned Bob, the IT guy. I, I heard a lot of positive things about his work there too. So that's pretty cool.
In addition to Laurentian Elementary.
And in addition to that, I don't know if Mr. Manny was going to speak today, but I heard that he, he took a little snooze on top of the roof.
Slept up there.
Of the Franklin, which is pretty cool too, for I Love to Read Month.
You camped out overnight, correct?
Yes.
What's that?
Didn't you camp out overnight up there?
I was up there.
There's a heated ice, ice house, right? It was, there was heat in there and everything?
There was heat.
Still cool, still cool.
The kids were going crazy. I picked up my son and he's like, everyone was going nuts. I was like, what is happening? And they were so excited. And my son, who's in a wheelchair temporarily, he had to, we had to go find Mr. Manny on top of the roof cause he was waving to all the kids. So that was cool, a lot of buzz.
Very cool.
Thanks Ange.
Fun stuff.
Thank you Angie.
Thank you Angie.
Up next 5.4, Scott Manny and the World's Best Workforce presentation.
And everybody has one of these?
Yep.
Yes.
Just to keep the little backdrop, the world's best workforce was put into statute in 2013 in Minnesota. So every district has to have a world best workforce plan. So I'm gonna run through ours. I'm gonna go to the next page for that. Oh, perfect, oh, perfect, thank you. So it has five areas. All students are school ready, third grade, chief literacy, college and career ready, graduates from high school, and to close the achievement gap. So this is kind of our district timeline. We had our stakeholder meetings in December and then we'll bring it to the school board now and then we'll monitor it through next year. Excellent, excellent access to excellent teachers. Part of closing the achievement gap is, one is we wanted to increase our proficiency rates by 2% in math and reading. And then two, we wanted to increase our math and reading scores of those students who identify in two ethnic subgroups. When I say two different groups, that would be like Native Americans, one group, Pacific Islanders, another. We don't have, our cells are so small, our biggest cell is the students who identify as two. So that's why we pick that cell. And this is our reading rates. As you can see, we made a big jump in fifth grade. We have some work to do in our other grades. And as I get to the end, you'll see where we need to go as a district. And these are our math proficiency rates. Our math jumped significantly in third grade this last year. So we did a great job in the third grade. We dropped a little in fourth and we dropped a little in sixth. The fifth held its own, but fifth and sixth, we're gonna talk about as we get to kind of to the end of this. And then here's our two subgroup, two or more subgroups did in reading and math in third grade. And we want to increase all students are, are school ready. What that means is when students come into school, they have to take, they have two components to be ready. Reading, math and social emotional. So you've noticed our, how much our reading has jumped and our math has jumped for the last three years. But look at the social emotional development one. What's happened to that during COVID? And then we are, we're gonna read well by third grade, those are third grade reading scores. And here's some, some, here's a positive, do you look at our graduation rates? Our graduation rate was 99% in 2021, which is up significantly from 19. We didn't have 20 because of the consolidation. That was the reason we didn't have those numbers. So that's a big positive. Our students are in college level coursework. Here's another area that we get, we are working on right now. If you've noticed, the number of students that are enrolled in PSEO as last year compared to the other two years and enrolled in CIS and AP courses. So we've gone up in AP, we've gone up in CIS, but we've also lost students that are going to the colleges. And it's still split, so this is Virginia and here's Ebleth Gilbert. And this is kind of our identifying needs going forward. We have format by statute, we had to form a, had to have a curriculum committee. We have that now, we've done that several times. They will have a coherent, standards-focused, demanding mathematics curriculum for 23, 24. As we consolidate as a district, we need to have a unified voice in our math curriculum so that it doesn't matter which building you're in, which teacher you have, you're going to get the same thing. And that, they piloted two of them this year and I think Dr. Smith, if I'm right, they'll be bringing it to the board later on, kind of what, what, how, how that pilot has went. Another big one is the academy model, the master schedule. That was a huge undertaking by, by Mr. Grip and Mr. Winter at the high school to create that master schedule using the academy model. And that's to, and also increasing the number of students in our career and college readiness. And then if you notice that in that seventh and eighth grade, we talk about teaching those important life skills. Because every time we go to employers, we talk about these things, the effective communication, the personal decision-making, realistic goal-setting, conflict resolution. That's in our seventh and eighth grade courses now, to be able to help our students as they get into the academies. So what questions do we have?
Well, I'm curious to go back when you have the all students ready for school, the kindergarten readiness. You have, there's such a decline in the social emotional development. Like how do you, how do you find that out and what does that mean exactly?
This was, if you could help a little bit, knowing the elementary, it's, this is the, they use a readiness test preschool going into kindergarten.
That measures their social emotional development or?
Yes, it measures all three of these.
And so that's been the same kind of test each year?
Each year, yes.
It's gone down that much?
Sure.
And you attribute it to COVID or what do you?
There's many factors, but a lot of it would be having to do with those, through those COVID years. There could be lots of other explanations too. But we just noticed that's where the decline has been.
Yeah, that's a major decline.
Yes, it is.
Any more questions, are you done?
Nope.
Questions to go?
No, very good, yeah, thank you.
All done Scott?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was gonna ask him, is there a pie in your face?
I offered up my student support person.
Okay.
Okay. 5.5 was discussed at 5.01, so we'll move on to 5.6. Spencer.
Yes, good evening. So tonight, I'm gonna talk about the preliminary budget for the 23, 24 school year. I did leave an updated sheet on each of you. How can we should, correction, actually looks better for our budget going forward. I had an old estimate in that calculation. So we'll get to that in a little bit, but I just wanted to point that out that you have it there. First thing that we need to do is to figure out our enrollment estimate. It's a major driver in our revenues. So included in your packet are several spreadsheets. I'm not gonna go through each one, but just so you know what they are. I have two spreadsheets that show enrollment by grade by school. So from Laurentian Elementary to Parkview Elementary, North Star, Ebleth Gilbert High School and Virginia High School, you can see what it is in each grade level. So you can see what today's actual enrollment was, this was as of March 3rd when I ran in. And then using the carry forward method, the next sheet, you can see what it looks like for an estimate for next year for the 23, 24. And then the next two sheets are summary, looking forward even two more years from next year. As you know, this year as we're presenting the budget in June, the plan is to show not just 23, 24, but what the budget's gonna look like in 24, 25 and 25, 26 to try to look further ahead. So starting to do some enrollment estimates on those years as well. So in the enrollment assumptions, we can use several different methods. In the past, we've looked at either the carry forward method, which is taking the kids that are in second grade, we're gonna assume all of them are gonna be in third grade next year, third grade to fourth grade and all the way down the line. Or we could use the progression method, which is looking at a Department of Education. It looks at three years of history for us and how many kids are we retaining going from second to third? That doesn't mean how many kids are being held back because of grades or anything. It's how many kids are moving back to our school in third grade that were in second grade last year. So those are the two different methods we've looked at in the past. This year in discussing with administration, we're looking at using the carry forward method. We think a lot of factors with our new schools opening that we could even see some kids moving into our district. This is maybe a conservative number, but I think at this point we wanna stay conservative with, with our. With that carry forward method, we're still looking at a decrease of 50 students from where we are now. And that's the graduating seniors and the kindergarten coming in. And that's where that, that difference comes in of 50. If we use the progression method, we would be looking at a decrease of 114 students. That's just looking at the last three-year history of moving. Now, of course, we know there was COVID in those three years and, and moving buildings and things like that, which probably affect our progression. We did lose some students to online and things like that. We think maybe that progression might be skewed a little bit to have us losing more kids than maybe would have helped continue to factor why we use the carry forward method. Should be used at this point. So that would be a decrease in 50 students. A pre-K ADM of 2,378 is what I'm using in these estimates right now. And we can talk more about, if you'd like me to change some estimates for future meetings at the end here. So after we get those enrollment assumptions, we have to look at what our revenue assumptions are gonna be. As you know, the state legislature are currently working on the education spending bill that will be for the 23, 24 and the 24, 25 school years. We won't know what those final outcomes are until May or June. So we have to use estimates. Right now, we've heard anywhere from 2% increase to 5% increase on the basic formula. These estimates, I'm using a 3% increase. So again, at the end, if you want me to use a different, different number, you can certainly look at those. So with a 3% and with a decrease in students, we're still seeing an increase in our general fund revenue by about $206,000. Obviously, revenue is tied to enrollment. So depending on what those assumptions, what we finalize as those assumption, it will affect that revenue. The next piece of revenue is our basic skills, our compensatory aid. This is really good news for us. If you remember in the last couple of years, this is the category that we saw a sharp decrease in revenues. Right now, we're looking at an increase of seven, almost $730,000 in that number. Which should be pretty solid right now because they're based off of our October of 22 enrollment. So the state does send those, these are, this is one number that we typically get early. So this is really good news for us. The last thing in revenue I'd like to talk about is ESER funding. As you know, we used one, a little over $1.1 million last, or this current school year of federal ESER funds to help fund our funding gap that we had last year. We saved enough to be able to do that again for the 23, 24 school year. If you remember, we kind of split it so that we could do, do it for the two years. The problem is that following year, the federal funds are no longer available. So we would, if we didn't do anything, we would have to cut $1.1 million to start our budget process in the 24, 25 school year. So last year, we had talked about splitting that over the next two years and making a reduction of half of that or $580,000 in the 23, 24 and then $580,000 in 24, 25. So you can see how that will affect. On the sheet. Overall, our estimated revenue increase is $930,000. Like I said, the legislature is still working. There's many, many bills that have been brought forward that could help increase even more revenues for us, whether it's special ed or other categorical revenue. So we just don't know yet, so we're not putting those in any estimate until we get further down the line this spring, so that we know kind of for sure. Our expense assumptions are next. The largest expenditure we have is our employment contracts, of course, which are up for negotiation. So here's another one where we're gonna have to make assumptions because we don't know what those costs are gonna be for next year. The negotiations for 23, 24 and 24, 25 are, will be coming up here shortly, I believe. Right now, we're using a 2% salary increase for our employees and a 3.5% health insurance increase for the benefits on those. Again, we don't know exactly when those are gonna come out through negotiations or through our bid process for health insurance. We won't know that until May, as we go through that again. And these assumptions are based on current staffing levels. So the staffing we have right now, 2% increase in health insurance increase gets us to what that increased cost will be. And the increased cost is pretty close to that $930,000 right now, based on those figures. So if you look at the big picture general fund budget, that's the sheet I put in front of you tonight. You can see what our ADM was using the carry forward method, that's a change of 50. Every pupil units is the weighted factor. Grade seven through 12 get weighted 1.2. Everybody else is a one. So you can see if you have more high school that you can get some more revenue that way. So you can see if you have more high school, that you can get some more revenue that way. Basic aid per pupil goes up by $206 per pupil. That's the 3%. And then you can see where the revenue increases are coming from and the total revenue change of 930. And then the estimated 2% on, on a settlement to our employment contracts, that's all the contracts district-wide, is $935,000. So we would need a reduction of just a little bit. Then we have to talk about ESAR and what we wanna do with that. So if we wanted to take half of that ESAR in the 23-24 budget and then the other half in the 24-25, we would need to look at just under $600,000 in reductions somewhere within the budget. So kind of the next steps. I'd like to hear your thoughts on the assumptions that we're using, the 3% revenue carryforward method, the 2% expenditures. We have to continue to monitor the state legislature and the education bills. If there's gonna be some positives or some negatives within those. We're working with principals and department administration on what is their staffing need as they look at enrollments and what classes kids are taking and those type of things. We'll need a school board recommendation of what that total dollar amount is that you'd like to see in reductions. Is it the half a million? Is it more than that? Is it less than that? So that we can bring more information forward to you. There is a school board finance committee this Wednesday, and I think we can talk more about this at that point as well. But if you as a, board as a whole, wanna talk about the assumptions tonight, or if you have an idea of what that reduction should be, that we bring more information forward, that would be great.
Can I ask why, why they choose the second to third grade for, for calculating the ADM estimate?
It's actually all grades. It's not just second to third.
Okay.
So they'll look at K to 1, 1 to 2, all the way down, and we'll get a progression rate for each one of those going forward. So it's not just one grade level.
Okay.
Like, one thing I can say is, you've always projected very good in the, in the last 15 years, and you're always conservative, and so I, I like the way that you've done it this year, so. The carryforward.
I kinda like the carryforward too.
And hopefully, with the opening of the high school, we'll get some more students here, and that'll help us with the 24-25 budget.
That's the hope, right?
Yep.
Sure.
Any questions for, any more questions for Spencer?
No, I'm glad you have a finance committee meeting this week, cuz maybe you can kinda dive into it a little bit more deep with them, so, yeah.
I don't know if any of you are on that committee?
I'm not.
I'm not.
Well, that might be good. They'll hear it then, those that aren't here tonight, they'll hear the same information and we can dive into it.
Okay.
Nobody likes to make cuts, that's for sure, right?
You are correct.
Thanks, Spencer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is the superintendent's report. Five point, five point seven point one, the Gilbert meeting in Gilbert residence to learn about the Wolfhead discovery.
Yep. A couple things, thank you Director Addy, to update the board on, we are having, meaning we Rockridge. We are hosting a public meeting, and it is intended mostly for the residents of Gilbert, although anyone can attend the meeting. And at the meeting, that's two days from now, Wednesday, 5 o'clock, right here. And the purpose of that meeting is to gather input from citizens of Gilbert, people who live in Gilbert, what they think about the ideas that Wolfhead has. They've been to your meeting, they've been to a combined school board, Gilbert council meeting. So, but we wanna do is get input from the citizens of Gilbert. So this is an open and public meeting. We'll have some reps from Wolfhead will be here. That's a group who you have the MOU with on the Gilbert building. They'll be here. We'll have a process for getting input from citizens. I'm hoping we have a large group of Gilbert citizens. We're interested in their opinion on what they think about the plans that Wolfhead is thinking about, and we'll gather feedback from them. And the entire purpose of this is to gather input from people who live in Gilbert. However, people who live in Elveth, Virginia, they're all welcome to attend. But that's the main purpose of the meeting. And so we just wanted to update the board as far as just so you know that is coming up here in two days. And we ran ads and all of the newsprint, so people should know about this event.
I think there was a little bit of confusion that I, I saw anyway on social media about the survey that went out to the residents of Gilbert regarding tearing the buildings down. And I think that it wasn't quite understood that the city did that survey.
That was the city of Gilbert.
To, to figure out if the city wanted to take on the buildings and, and have that, you know, potentially impact taxpayers and that kind of thing. So they wanted to know what, what the residents felt regarding that. But this is something totally different. This is somebody else that's coming in to look at purchasing the building and doing something, repurposing it.
Right. This is completely different. This is specifically focused on Wolfhead. Here's what they're proposing. Gilbert, what do you think? You like it, not like it? What really strikes you? You're right. So this is not related at all to the city of Gilbert survey that they did a year plus ago or so. Yep. This is a completely separate, only to the Wolfhead, which is why Wolfhead will be here to talk about, hey, here's what we're thinking about. Good point.
And not being from Gilbert, I have relatives there. This is a, a looks on paper and what they wanna do, if they achieve it, to be a good thing for the Gilbert taxpayers. And it's gonna bring economic development in, bring people in for summer seminars and throughout the year. And it's not gonna be a cost to them.
No, that is, no, it's intended to be cost neutral. And I know part of what the residents of Gilbert will have to kinda think about is, Gilbert used to have 3,000 residents. I think now there are 1,600, 1,700 residents. So it's gone not in the direction you wanted to go in Gilbert over the last couple of decades. Is this something that could help? Is this something that helped the city of Gilbert? And if the answer, if the Gilbert residents say no, then we move on. If the Gilbert residents say, yeah, this might help, this might work, then it's worth further discussion.
When you talk about the city of Gilbert, I don't think, you know, all cities are suffering population decline, you know, as far as.
He's sensitive about that.
He's sensitive, yeah.
Sensitive about this, cuz, you know, me growing up, I mean, you just, I mean, Gilbert was 2,600, 2,500 people at one time. And, you know, Elveth was close to, I wanna say, pretty close to what, 6,000 at one time? And Virginia was what, 12,000 at one time? Growing up. And you look at now, it's just, I mean.
That's why we consolidated.
I know, I know, I know, but I'm just, you know, I look back at that and it's kinda, you know, the good years, you know.
I mean, I've gotten some positive feedback regarding, cuz there's talk about a zip line as well. And there's been positive feedback that I've received about that possibility and, and especially with the ATV stuff going.
I think, yeah, lots of excitement. I hope there's a lot of participation. Lot of people come from Gilbert and they can get all their questions answered and get information and.
The, the one thing that I don't think we all look at in our Quad City area is, Virginia has no lots, you know, for building, really, for, for homes. Gilbert has an area where they can expand, and this would be something that would spur people to possibly, you know, that may work at that, or all the offshoot businesses that would come from Wolfhead, so.
I have to say on a side note, because I am in real estate, that I have seen there are people moving up here specifically to go to Rockridge, and they want Rockridge School District. So I am happy to see that.
That's great.
And on, and on this note.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Thank you. On this Wolfhead, I did speak with a business owner yesterday who reached out to me, and he says it would detrimental, it would affect his business in a positive way. That his business would, it would increase if the zip line and this stuff was to be, was to be.
And if we could collaborate, you know, with something to do with the robotics, I think that would be a great opportunity for us as well.
Absolutely. And one thing here that, if you grew up here, maybe you don't realize some of the stunning features that are up here. Nobody has mines and pits like exist up here. Nobody has them. There are sand pits in other parts of the state that are really small. Here, they're huge, they're massive, big side rock walls. You don't see that anywhere else. So the, I know at first when you hear it, it's kind of a head turner, but things have worked before. And we just wanna let the residents of Gilbert think about it, and then let us know what they think about it.
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks, Noel.
Thank you.
Next thing I just wanna do, to talk to the board about, is the budget process. Now, you heard Spencer talking about, here's where we're at. Here's his, the numbers that he has. So here's the process. We do have a hard date coming up, which is April 1st. So if we do need to lay off any tenured teachers, we have to do it before April 1st. We do not have a lot of non-tenured teachers in this district. So I believe the possibility is high that we might have to lay off a tenured teachers. So, going backwards from that date, what we'll do is the finance committee will meet. I'm talking behind doors with the principals. This is normal. This is what we always do. Talking about to give you, if you approve and say, we need to do this, it's your decision on what you wanna do. In discussions with us, we're thinking that if you take half of the deficit this year, and then you take another half of the deficit next year, that kinda makes sense. What you don't wanna do is to not do anything this year, because then what's gonna happen is you're gonna have a million-plus-dollar deficit to take care of next year, and it's just worse. So it's better to take care of at least half of it. And then we'll see what happens with the enrollment next year, because one thing we've seen, and this is real, is that we have, Spencer predicted how many numbers would be in the elementary, how many numbers would be in the high school. This is last year. At this time, he did the same thing. We actually, as of today, we have more kids in the elementary school. And so what's happened is that from the start of the school year until now, we've actually had more kids go to our elementary schools. This is a plus. And so, and partly this is because one of them opened, and then they were getting closer to a second one opening, so there's kind of excitement about that. Now, the high school is gonna open in the fall. Will there be an effect from the high school? We don't know, but based upon what you're hearing, maybe. Probably because of the uniqueness of that building and what we're doing with it. I know Willie gave a tour today of someone from out of town who specifically came here because exactly what you said. They'd heard about Rockbridge, the story, and they wanted to visit the high school and see it. And I haven't talked to Willie about it, but I'm pretty sure they're gonna like what they see and what we're doing. But we, that hasn't happened yet. And so, process-wise, the finance committee will meet Wednesday, talk about some of the parameters. Then we have a, we'll continue talking with the principals and the admin team about some suggestions and recommended areas. Then in your next board meeting at the end of the month, we will come back with the whole budget. That'll probably be, that'll be a longer board meeting, cuz KAA will also be here too, doing some presenting. And then we'll talk about where do you wanna end up as far as the budget process. You don't have to approve the budget, but you'll need to tell us about where you think you want to go as a school. And then we will give you recommendations for areas to reduce, to balance the budget out, cuz you just have to, we just have to do that. And if there are any tenured teachers involved, you will have to go through a process. There's a formal legal process you have to go through before the 1st of April. And we are trying to minimize the teacher part of it as much as possible, but it could happen. So that's kinda the process. You still will, after that, can approve the budget. But what we're not gonna do is, in the next week or so, talk about who, talk about people. Best thing to do is talk about areas. You know, what makes sense as far as rebalancing, what makes sense, cuz now we're going into a new high school. How many people do we need in this, that, and the other things? And so that's what we're doing right now with the admin and the principal group, mostly the principal group. And then we'll have those done. You'll see those in the last meeting in March. If any tenured teachers might be impacted, they will be on the agenda. And, but we will have talked to them before that, so they know that that could be a possibility. And in fairness, if you, if you're gonna, if we have to let somebody go, it's better to do it early in the process, so they have time to look for a position somewhere else. So we don't wanna wait even with non-tenure till June or something like that. So we wanna do that earlier. So that's just kinda sneak preview about what's coming up with the budget process. Does this make sense, or any questions from board members?
Makes sense.
Yep.
And then Director Addy, I'm going back in time to Emily Jankala. I was reading at the forum here, and we do need the school board. The school board is being asked to approve what you just heard her say, to approve her report.
I'll make that motion.
We are gonna have to go back in time to approve what you heard Emily say.
I'll support.
The forum is asking for that.
And we're gonna go back to.
So we're just approving the report?
Yes.
Okay, so if I point to, can I get a motion to approve the Justice Education Update Report?
I.
Moved by. Randy. Supported by Director Lotiger. Any discussion? Favors signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. You're done with your budget process? Okay. Six point one. The final reading, the final reading of the, the policy changes. Two will do 203.2 and 206 together. All those in favor signify.
Need a motion.
Need a motion? Excuse me. Need a, can I get a motion to?
Approve.
Approve the final reading.
I move.
Moved by Director Colbert Dahl. Support by.
Riordan.
Riordan? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administrative items. No, no, we've got six point, oh, that's it. Seven administrative items. Seven point one, consider approval with the DoBID auctions for the Virginia High School. I believe that was Willie, so you're gonna have to speak to.
Yes, I'm, I'm filling in for Willie here. He had an important event to go to involving his kids. So what this is, we did this last year. We, we have, the topic is, we are closing Elveth Gilbert High School, we are closing Virginia High School. We have some stuff in both of those buildings that we need to, we don't need. And we probably should sell them to some local, hopefully somebody in the local area. And DoBID is what we, one of the vehicles we used last year, and the reason why we went with part of them is it's online. So you can get anybody, you don't have to show up, you can go online, do it. They're the only ones who really do this. So Willie tried to see if anybody else was interested in doing an online bidding or something, or see if, try and get three bids. He couldn't. DoBID is unique in the area. So what this request is, do you want us to go through the process again and work with DoBID to create an online auction for some of the larger, bigger, heavier, more unusual things? I'm not talking about desks or chairs or cabinets or bookshelves. We're not talking about that. Those will have for sale at a, show up and, like a garage sale, like we did last year. We had several of those. We'll have another one of those. It'll be at Virginia High School though. So this one is asking the board, do you want us to go ahead with another online auction with DoBID?
I will make that motion to have an agreement with DoBID auctions for the Virginia High School.
You want to support?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Nicole.
Support by Colbert Dahl. Okay, any, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Seven point two, approval of the MOU between Rockridge Teachers Union and the Rockridge School Board regarding off-school property. regarding off-school property instruction for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Director Lotiger, support by Director Addy. Any discussion?
It's only for one year.
I think we discussed it a lot last time.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 7.3, consider permission for up to four staff, two elementary administrators, two elementary teachers to attend the ASAASA, American Association of School Administrators, sponsored workshop on the Happiness Advantage, Orange Frog, Create a Positive, High Performing Schools in Alexandria, Virginia on March 28 through 23, 2023. Did you want to speak to that at all?
Yep. The only thing I want to clarify for the board, it really is probably three teachers and one admin. It's not two and two. And this is the one, I know it was discussed quite a bit last time. Nothing has really changed. It's whether the board has any further questions or.
What was the, the price take again, and where does that money come from?
The money would come from staff development. We always have X number of dollars that we have to use for staff development purposes. I'm ballparking this, it'll probably be somewhere around $10,000 to $12,000. I'm going on the high side.
Okay, I did a little research on it, and, I mean, it is, it's not, it's something that's quite new. And I did see that the program like has, it was projected about $10,000, and it's ended up costing the school district $32,000. So I just feel like I'm, yeah, I'm not real comfortable with it, I guess. It's been a new program that really, I haven't, I don't know, I just, I'm not real comfortable with it. I feel like there's other things out there that might be better, and it just seems, I mean, the idea of it sounds wonderful. It does. I'm not saying it doesn't, because it's happiness and all of that, but I don't know. I'm just, I think it could end up costing us a lot more than we anticipated, so.
And the purpose of this is to not going because we're saying we're going to do it, but to send them out and then have those folks come back. We'll bring them back to a board meeting if you say yes, and then you, they'll tell you what they think about it.
But they're going to be indoctrinated, I mean, they're going to like it once they go out there. I just, that's what's going to happen, because they're getting trained in it, and they're going to be trained, so, yeah. I mean, I view it a little bit differently. I don't think it is exploratory. I think it's, seems official to me.
It's unlike just for creating a positive.
It is, it sounds great. It does. I'm not saying it doesn't. It does, but I'm just, I have reservations.
I'll make a motion that way.
Motion by Director Riordan.
Support.
Support by Director Lotiger.
So it's a good use of staff development, and not many times, but sometimes teachers come back and they say, this is a great program, but not a good fit for us right now, so that may happen.
Any more discussion?
I mean, I just think you could do it online or do it that way. I don't think we would have to spend that much sending people out there, but that's just my opinion.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so it's a 3-1 vote. Okay. 7.4, consider MOU between AFSMI, Local Council 65, Local 3, and Rockridge Schools regarding vacation carryover. Do you want to speak to that, Noel?
Yes, thank you, Director Addy, members of the board. This is another one, which is very similar to what we did last year. This is a request to do an MOU, Memo of Understanding, between AFSMI. And mostly, this is, has to do with custodians. Last year, custodians get so many days of vacation a year, and they have to use it up by a certain date. Well, last year, because we were closing buildings, moving to Laurentian, people were moving around, Roosevelt was moving to the old Franklin Building, we had an MOU that allowed custodians to wait and take it a little bit later. So this is very similar to that, where we talked to AFSMI, AFSMI is okay with this, Mike Hoag has been involved with this. We think it's a good idea. It works for both parties. So that, this way, custodians aren't pressured to use vacation time up by June 30th. So if they want to wait till July or August, that actually frankly helps us out, because then we can get the Virginia High School moved out, we can get Elvis Gilbert High School moved out. It just, it's kind of a, helps both parties out. So that's what this request is for.
Can I get a motion for 7.4?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Lotiger.
I'll support.
Support by Director Dahl. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 8, 8.1, regular meeting is going to be on March 27 at 6:00 PM at the Rockridge Administrative Building right here. Number nine, I'll just say that I'm going to have a procedure. I might, if, depending how well everything goes, I might miss that meeting. I'm hoping not to, just depending. But just to let the board members that are sitting here, let them know that, that I might, but I'm not anticipating.
Well, good luck with your procedure.
Thank you. And can I, number nine, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
By Director Riordan, support by Director Lotiger. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.